Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the public hearing for the water sewer rate ordinance scheduled for Monday, June 9th at 6:55 PM. Ms. Bettis, will you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember McCarge?
Here.
Councilmember Sacyrs?
Here.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak on the water sewer rate ordinance? Please come up to the podium and state your name. Anybody wishing to speak?
Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Wallace.
The water ordinance, when I go back and I look, what the seniors is paying for their water is history. Since that cost added for the sewer and water availability, the seniors, on the average, for three units of water, pay seventeen dollars a unit. You go and look at Barson's, their average is five dollars and eighty-six cents a unit. You remember, citizens can't write their taxes, their expenses off on taxes, businesses can. You go and look at K-Marts, and I ran these from back to 2003, all of them. You go over and look at K-Marts, they average ten dollars a unit. If you go to Toast, they're nine seventy-two a unit. Bowlin, he's pretty, pretty high, too. But, I mean, it's just ungodly what you charge the seniors. And the only person, the old council, the only person that voted against that was Jalen Lynch. That's not right to rape the seniors that way. Seventeen dollars a unit and a business that they can write their expenses off is paying five dollars and eighty-six cents a unit. And you can go back, I did it since 2003 on K-Marts, Barson's, and several others. That's not right. It's not fair. And we got 1.8 million dollars, nobody can find. You know how many units that is? That's eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand units. Sixty-four million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one gallons, and nobody knows where it came from or where it went. Somebody in the city better be doing some audit.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on the water rate? Mr. Buckner.
Good evening, council. I went back and I pulled up the budgets, which you can pull offline, from the state of Michigan, 2011, 2012, 2013. And I'm not going to go and bore you with the figures. You should have them. If not, you can get them from the city manager, he'd be happy to provide them for you. It talks about, when they file the budget, operating revenue, operating expense, and then the net. So we look at 2011, operating revenue was eight million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand. Operating expense, seven million, six hundred and thirty dollars. Operating income was one million, three hundred and thirteen, and you minus off the investment income, which was about sixteen thousand, and then the interest expense for the bond, net income for that year was nine thousand, seven hundred, seventy-eight thousand, I'm sorry, nine thousand, seventy-eight, seven, seventy. 2012, ten million dollars revenue. Operating expense, eight million, two hundred and thirty-seven. Get down to the bottom line after you chase out the interest expense, the change, net income was one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Move to 2013, operating revenue, eleven million, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Total operating expense, nine million, five hundred and eighty-four dollars, seven hundred and two. Take out the, add the investment income, interest expense for the bond again, total net income was one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. Now if you move on to the proposed, which is kind of, I think you should use a little bit more judgment on this, you put down your revenue is going to be roughly ten million, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, and basically your expenses are going to be the same. I beg the difference with you. If you go back and look at the cost of the water, cost of the sewer, there's no way it's going to come up to seven million like you planned. So let's just take, basically, if you go by last year's figures, roughly, you're going to have another 1.3 million surplus. So you add all those four years together, and we've got five million, one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. So why do we need a rate increase? We need a decrease, and I mean a big one. Because nobody's giving back the 1.3 million that came out on August the 12th from Platte Moran, and Bob Murray himself gave the figures from Platte Moran, dated August the 1st, and it was done on August the 12th, 2013 agenda, water costs from DPW was ninety cents a unit.
Your three minutes is up, sir.
And dollar fifteen for sewage.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll ask one more time, anybody else for the water rate sewer ordinance? Okay, seeing none, we will close out the public hearing. We'll move into our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, June 9th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the national anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
(Singing) O say, man, you see, by the long, sunny light, I see nothing here, and the twilight's last gleaming, full of stripes and bright stars, through the neverless night, for the flag has been washed, first the gallant is speaking, and the fog is red, the moon is shining, give to the night, as a flag, oh, you may. O say, God, that's so, 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 so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Bettis, will you take the roll, please?
Good evening, Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember McCarge?
Here.
Councilmember Sacyrs?
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda, council. We had an ad tonight, if we'll make that B-6 for personal property tax exemption for international extrusion.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the agenda dated Monday, June 9th, 2014, with the inclusion of B-6.
Support.
Support for Councilmember Sacyrsky. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sacyrsky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item five, community events. Monica Fulton?
I just have a couple of events and programs to announce to mayor, council, and the public. First, I'd like to invite everyone out to the Dance Express Dance Recital, will be held tomorrow and Wednesday of this week at Aliri Auditorium, starting at 7:00 PM. Tickets at the door, six dollars. I just came from their dress rehearsal. Fantastic show. It's going to be really, really great. If you want a nice evening of family entertainment, I highly recommend you check it out. Lori Kuchar, our dance coordinator, does a phenomenal job, all of her dance instructors and everything, so, that is tomorrow and Wednesday. Next up, the Family Resource Center is registering for the Summer Heat program. For those of you who might not know, this is a summer day camp program, meets four days a week for four hours a day, from 9:30 to 1:30. It begins Monday, July 14th. It will run for six weeks. The cost for the six-week program is only sixty dollars per child. It is a fantastic bargain. There will be activities, games, arts, crafts, field trips, we'll be at the park one day a week, at Maplewood the rest of the week. Just a really great program. I do have flyers here that I'll give to Ms. Bettis, or if she can make those available, thank you. And also, we are offering Financial Peace Junior. This is for children ages seven to eleven, and that will meet beginning July 14th on Mondays, actually immediately after Summer Heat. Summer Heat is also open to seven to eleven-year-olds, so this is an extra bonus to have class if the families so choose. Financial Peace Junior will include the full kit and a box book set, as well as fun activities and snacks every day, every Monday. And that is only thirty dollars per child. And I, again, I will make some flyers available. Oh, that's okay, sorry. And last up, I just got word from the American Lung Association, they sought us out to seek a partnership with us to provide the Not on Tobacco program for teens. It's actually a smoking cessation program for teenagers ages fourteen to nineteen. They had trained two of our staff at the Family Resource Center, and we're so impressed with them and with the other work that we do in the community, that they reached out to us, and we'll be working with them. They trained five additional of our staff at no cost, which is a thousand-dollar value, and we will be able to offer this workshop to any teen for free, as well as providing incentives at no cost to us, thanks to the American Lung Association. So registration is going on now for that as well. That begins July 15th, and it meets two days a week in the afternoon for the teenagers during the summer from 3:00 to 4:00. So again, that is, that is free as well. So, these are some flyers, too.
So how far is that?
And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
There's a free handout limit, you know that, right? Okay, that's our community events tonight. Comments from state and county officials? I don't see Mr. Kinesik or Mr. LeBlanc here. I do see Mayor Hampton from the city of Inglewood here. Welcome, sir. Good to have you. We have no petitions or communications, public hearing we had at the top of this hour. We'll move on to item nine, the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items nine, eight, one, and two.
Support.
Support for Councilmember Sacyrsky. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sacyrsky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
It's your night tonight, huh?
Apparently.
Hi. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to our study session. B-1, water and sewer rate ordinance.
See, see agenda, but if I could make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just so everybody knows, there is no water rate increase. These are all decreases, for all the way across the board, and holding the rates for the next, is it four years?
Four years.
So there are no increases in this budget. That's why I can support it this year. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. The consumption, water consumption rate and the sewer rate are staying the same. The fixed rate, we decreased from 161.60 down to 96.18. So the low-end user is going to see a 16 percent, and there was a 5 percent increase from the city of Detroit, which we did not pass on to the residents, that they, they sent to all the cities. So we absorbed that, and there's, the low-end users will see a 16 percent, the mid-users will see a 8 percent decrease, and the high-end users will see a 7.8 percent decrease. So the water, overall water bill will go down for everyone, starting July 1st, the new rate takes effect. And we, we hope to keep them the same for the next four years, on the water and sewer rate consumption. Any other comments?
Mayor, I agree with exactly what you just said, but just so you know, the high-end user rate, the rate decreased in the first year is actually a negative 3.7. It goes down 3.7.
I thought it was, hang on a minute, I thought I had, I seen 7.8.
Yep. First year.
Ms. Bettis, can you double-check, both of us?
I'm looking.
And give the correct statement on the high-end user?
For the high-end user, it's going down 7.8 percent.
That's what I thought.
What, what are you, what are you doing?
Oh, that's what it is now.
Right, and then what happens next year? Okay, is this ours? Is it supposed to be ours?
Yes, I see. Okay, thank you. It was ours compared to the auditors.
So it is 7.?
Correct. I apologize, you're right, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to just let everyone know that when there is a fixed rate involved, and we receive fixed charges from the city of Detroit, from the Rouge Valley Center, so, just logically, because of the math, anytime you have an increase in users, their unit rate is going to go down. It's just simple math. So if you have a large user, their unit rate is going to be less than someone who has a very small usage.
Okay. C?
Yes, yes.
Purchase service credit.
C.
C. Supplemental appropriation for C, CDEG.
C.
Contract extension for Hennessy Engineering Incorporated.
C.
And 2014 Florence Avenue paving project?
C.
For A and B as well?
Yes.
And then we got B-6?
Yes.
Personal property tax exemption?
C.
C. Okay, we will move on to C. C-1, water sewer rate ordinance.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 53, Title V of the City of Garden City Code, providing for rate and charges for water and sewer service, providing, excuse me, for offset the expenses incurred by the city in providing water and sewage disposal, providing for metering of consumption of water, providing for billing for water and sewage disposal services.
Support.
Support. Councilmember King, any discussion from the table? From the general public? Mr. Wallace?
Right, you're going, one unit, one, how much would that be? One unit?
For one unit?
Seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
How much?
Twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, I believe.
Is it? Twenty-eight, ninety-six.
Four, no, that's four thousand gallons.
Per thousand.
That's a thou-
Per thousand.
Two dollars and eighty-nine cents for the unit, but it comes out to twenty-eight, ninety-six for a thousand cubic feet.
A unit of water?
It's going down.
Go stop. One unit of water is seven dollars, eight dollars and some change.
Have you asked, have you asked on top of that? You find a way to do that, to measure. Find a way to mess with it.
Mr. Wallace? Buddy Wallace, decrease of 16 percent is nothing. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. When you pay around two dollars for the water, cost, total cost for the sewer and water, and you're already up at 8.13, is total cost, eight dollars and thirteen cents, that's a markup of 384 percent. If you take and add the 26.57 to it, you're talking about another 260 percent. You're killing the old people. And it's just like a car. If you put more miles on the car, it wears it out quicker. Excess water users will damage the equipment by running more water through it than somebody running three units, you can't tell me it don't wear out quicker with, with 240 units or 500 units than it does for three units. It's impossible. It's scientifically wrong, okay? And I still can't get over, we haven't found out about the, we charge more water, 1.3 or 1.8 million dollars, than water we paid for? Gosh. I think the state should come in and audit our city, I really do. I'm going to request it. I'm going to start writing bill shooting. This is not right, folks. This is not right. And it's still sitting out there. You haven't give it back. You haven't give the water back. That's ridiculous. And I'll go back in the aluminum place, the international extrusion, they average 8.48 a gallon. Barson's, five, I mean, a unit. Barson's, 5.86. The senior citizens, seventeen dollars a unit. Shame on you. Shame on you. 16 percent is nothing. Nothing. When you mark it up that much, and then you add services to, from the sewer and water, that's garbage. Anybody else? Mr. Mulher?
I know this isn't the question time, but I've got to find out. On this water rate to serve, it says 45.18, and then on the sewer, it says 45.18. I thought one time it was going to be combined.
It is going to be combined this year, right? Ms. Bettis?
Well, what is the rate to serve, charge, if you put them both together? That's all I want to know. But if you got it down on this water figure, it's down two different times.
It's going to be ninety-six dollars and eighteen cents.
So it is 45.
Forty-eight.
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 Forty-eight oh nine. Were you, were you 2015?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
No, I'm looking 2014.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're ahead of me.
No, 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 yeah, sorry.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Buckner? Make sure she knows it's three minutes.
I just.
I hope that's a misprint, if it's forty-eight dollars on each ready serve for water and sewage, that's ninety-six dollars, so really, we're not getting a decrease of 16 percent. We're getting a price hike. I still go back to what I did last time I was here, and I will beg anybody to argue with me. I have a last year's copy of a seven units, exact days, 61 days. I have one of the new low-end user increase of seven units, 63 days. My bill before was 77.25, it went up to 84.81. You sit down and figure out, and like I said, I got this from Bob Murray here, which he got the information from DSW, 90 cents a unit for water, two, I'm sorry, a dollar fifteen that we're paying for sewage, and, you know, you're charging, you're paying two dollars and five cents, and you're turning around and charging us eight dollars and thirteen cents. If you look at the old rate, I was paying, like anybody else, that used lower rate, 519 percent increase of what the city was paying. The new rate is 590 percent. And you want me to get all hot and fuzzy inside because you're giving us 16 percent. Now, we've got some new council people up here, and I don't hold it against you. Now, Margot and King, I think very highly, I think you're about the two smartest one that we have up here right now. Please do not have an old coat go onto a new coat and be tagged with doing this. Now, I know Lynch got up here and said that he, I think urged increased 63 percent. I was still, I would meet with you personally, unless you've got some deal going like Barson has, that can get water cheaper, then what I need to do is have my whole block on Hennepin to hook up into one line, so that we can use more water and get a cheaper rate like Barson. You're ripping us off.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
When I was here, a couple of meetings-
State your name, sir.
Name is William Sabroglia. Live on Brown Street in Garden City. When I was here, a few meetings passed, I brought in two identical bills of usage. I think it was seven units or something. The old and then the new, with the new configuration of ready to serve, or, and the same usage with the new rate supposedly lower, I'm paying 10.80 more. If we're trying to conserve water, the less you use, the more you pay with your system here. Why can't you go back to the old formulation? That's what I'm getting at.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any comments from council?
Your honor, I do have one.
Yes, Ms. Mulher.
I know people don't like to hear that. I, I'm reading it as the rest of the council is reading it. We are not raising rates. For the next five years, we are actually lowering rates. It's just not 16.1 percent the first year, it's 15 the second year, it's 13.7 the third year, 9.8 the fourth year, and 5.7 percent the fifth year. I understand that people don't like to pay their bills, I get it. I don't like to pay my water bills either, I don't get a discount. But I want the residents to know that I today decided I was going to look up my whole year of my water bills to see how much I pay a year in water. I pay, there's my address, 757 dollars and 23 cents for the year. So I divided that by 365 days. That came out to be two dollars and seven cents a day I pay for my water, flushing my toilet, taking showers, doing laundry, brushing our teeth, washing dishes, doing what we have to do, watering my garden, watering my lawn. I don't think what we're doing is unreasonable, and I'm sorry if people don't agree with us at this time, but I am in favor of this ordinance, and I'm going to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor?
Ms. King?
I'll back that up. And there are people here sitting in the audience right now, because I went into it also to check and see what was going on and how much it actually cost us. And you have to understand that that money, as in one case, is only a dollar fifteen a day, is what's being paid. Not only does it cover everything that she spoke about, it also covers having people working in the facility, or in taking care of our water system, the sewers, and everything else. Stop and think about the simplicity of that. A dollar fifteen a day, come on. That's less than what you pay for your telephones, okay? So, that's all I have to say, and I am in favor of it, too, and it is taking us down. Okay? Everybody gets a reduction. You're going to see that. You just have to wait and see. July?
The rate will take effect July 1st, and if they bill every two months, they'll see it in their September bill.
Okay.
The rate starts on July 1st, so you've got to use water for two months, and then when you get your September bill, that is when you'll see a lower water bill. Ms. McCarge?
And I'm sure that sun is kind of hitting me just right here. I know it's been very frustrating for me, and I know for the residents, the issue with having sold more water than, you know, that issue, but I think the city's been, being very responsible, because we don't know what happened, and there's been experts trying to find out. And it is, I, I know that's an ongoing project, as far as trying to find out what happened, but if we end up having to pay a community for the money, I mean, for the water, that possibly went to them and not us, we have to have that, those funds, those funds. We can't use the funds for any other reason than water, and they're sitting there until there's some type of solution. I think the city's being responsible for, you know, holding on to that money until we know what's going on. We can always, in the future, give that back to, you know, the citizens, however that can be done legally. And so, and the other thing is, some of the information that we received are coming from engineers and stuff, and, and I have to use that information as the facts to make my decision. decision. Some of the figures and numbers that I hear are confusing to me. What I heard from the written reports and what we're getting from the, our engineers, I'm making that my decision to go, you know, to approve this. So I think we're doing what we're supposed to do, and that's reducing the rates as we can.
Mayor.
Mr. Kerwin.
Yes, sir. I know you guys don't want to hear it, but I've got to vote for it too, because, I mean, it really is a reduction. It is. It's a reduction. Just the way it is. I know all your, all of you fellows are upset, and I think a lot of those things need to be looked into, but this is going to lower all of our water rates. Simple as that. And like Mrs. McCarrick said, I don't want to bring up old hat or, but that money, that is there. I, I've talked to the city manager about it. I mean, what if all of a sudden tomorrow, somebody says, hey, that's our money, that's our water? We have to have that money and pay them if that, if that can be proven, you know? So I don't like it either, but I'm going to have to vote for it, so. That's it.
Anybody else from the table? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C2, purchase service credits.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve the purchase of Municipal Employees Retirement System, MRS, service credit of six months by Raymond Glennfield, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this application.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarrick. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C3, supplemental appropriation.
Your honor.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,522 as a result of increased funding from CDBG for the senior coordinator wages.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C4, contract extension for Hennessy Engineers Incorporated. Councilmember Lynch?
I move to extend the existing general engineering services contract with Hennessy Engineers Incorporated through June 30th, 2017, with no increase in rates.
Support from, Mr. Kerwin, did you say, did you support that?
Yes, sir.
Support from Mr. Kerwin. Discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. C5, 2014 Florence Avenue paving project.
Your honor.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
I move to authorize East Jordan Iron Works of East Jordan, Michigan, to provide certain supplies for Florence Avenue paving project as described in the correspondence from Hennessy Engineers LLC dated May 29th, 2014, in the amount not to exceed $18,076.44.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table?
Mayor.
Ms. McCarrick.
When I was reading about this, I was, I was kind of excited about the fact that because the city is purchasing this, the valves directly, there was a savings instead of having the, you know, contract, you know, engineers, you know, company do that. So kudos. I don't know who's, who thought of that, but that's a good saving.
Pat Rolles.
Well, thank you, Pat Rolles.
Any other discussion? From the general public?
I'd like, let's be open it, go.
We don't know that yet.
I can't understand. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item 5B, award of construction contract.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to authorize Fiori Enterprises LLC to perform construction phase services as described in correspondence dated May 29th, 2014, from Hennessy Engineering Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $1,416,180.55.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Sessirsky. Discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C6, personal property tax exemption.
Mayor.
Ms. McCarrick.
I would motion to approve the attached resolution, amending resolution number 14-02-037 of February 24th, 2014.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Ms. Bettis, we'd already approved this. This is just a language change they wanted to put in?
Yes, sir. The state of Michigan asked us to put in a language regarding the exemption, so we're going to do that and they'll be happy.
Okay. Any other discussion from the table? From the general public? Mr. Buckner?
I heard correct, this is the same company that got the tax rebate for 15 years and then they get a tax, personal property tax. So really, they're not bringing no taxes into the city. And hopefully, some of their workers will maybe visit McDonald's and maybe buy some gas, maybe go to CVS and bring some income into the city.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
I'm sorry, the support was?
Ms. Squires.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Sessirsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We move on to public comments, items that were not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please come up, state your name. Anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Buckner?
It's sad that we have a council that likes to pretend that they're full of citizens and benefiting us. 16 percent. I'm surprised at you, Jim. I really am.
That, we talked about the water. That was on the agenda. You can't speak on that.
Okay. Let's go to the budget then. We got the budget, and I did hear some good things, that you guys got together at the meeting and that you voted down not to have extra help that wasn't needed. And that was good. I still say that we need to be looking ahead because we've got some firemen that we're going to be losing if we don't enact somehow or another to keep them. Now, I will interrate to you once again that when you got, like Bob Murray, like I said, the last, the first two pages of that budget is worth more than the whole budget itself because he told you the truth. He told you exactly what's going to happen in the next year or two and what were going to be happening with all the negotiations, with the legacy costs that nobody's really that concerned about, got a little bit built up for that. Maybe we could use the water fund to help that out. But anyway, what's going to happen is you're going to have to come to the citizens for a millage. And I'm telling you what, this one will not pass as easy as the last one did. This one will get some storm with it because you're going to have to explain to them 16 percent versus four, five, six millage, whatever you want. You'll have to pull some rabbits out of your hat or something because I think that the people are going to hear, hear the truth this time. They're going to see in black and white. If we've got to go door to door to, to wise them up. I know that the cable doesn't get no more than maybe 30, 40 hits a week when they're canceled on. I know the newspaper don't hit no more than a few hundred. But door to door campaign, that will alert people. Facebook will alert people. People have got to wise up. You can't just tax us to death. We have someone here tonight that can very well tell us what rates does in a city and what is taking that city. And I still stand by what I said two years ago. If Garden City doesn't wise up, we can be facing bankruptcy. We're now up to $250 million of future unfunded legacy costs. And once again, I stand by this. We do not have a firm leader in this city. We have someone that wants to take his leader.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Wallace.
You know what's amazing? As we get people that does audits, we won't mention any names, but you can go out and look at state audits. Several of these companies, of these cities are failing. Lincoln Park, two years ago, the auditors said they were in great shape. You know what? I can tell you what I think is going to happen. Before too long, some of these cities are going to go bankrupt, just like Detroit. The citizens are going to be wise enough to sue the auditors because the auditors cause their property values to go down. So you're going to have a class action lawsuit on the auditors because auditors, if people at the city don't like what they say, well, they'll come back another day and bring us something different. Boy, boy. I can take this pencil, I've had graduate studies in different states, Boston, University of Michigan, Michigan State, UK. You can take this pencil and I can make you make a profit and I can make you make a loss. And there are some people that can rattle on and on and on and say the same old thing. I've got five minutes, and they can speak 25 minutes and don't say two minutes worth of, of data. I'm not an engineer. Maybe not. Maybe I am. You don't know. But figures don't lie. People do. People lie. And why? I don't know. Don't do you any good. Doesn't do you any good. But I appreciate the new council, Margot and Mrs. King. They have brought a lot to this council. They really have. I appreciate them. But I tell you what, though, it's, it's going to get deep. You've got cities going bankrupt, and it's not just going to affect the city, the city workers, it's going to affect my house value. It's going to affect my children that live in Garden City, their house value. And what's going to happen? I'm telling you, it's going to happen. The people are going to take a class action lawsuit against the auditors because I, my opinion is the auditors are failing. They don't do their due diligence. They don't do their due diligence. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
On the governor's request for duplication of facilities in or near this city, are you still in the progress of possibly merging certain departments? It's about time that we consider that on top on the agenda to cut down expenses. What we're getting at now is, in my opinion, I think it's protecting one's own little dynasties and all these cities, counties, et cetera. We've got to get off the high horse and cut the budget. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. If we are a city of five miles square, damn near encompassed by Westland, there's no reason why something like that couldn't be incorporated with other facilities of adjacent cities. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mary McLendon from county.
Good evening. I'm Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner, Richard LeBlanc, and it's always a pleasure to be here in your fine city. As you know, this is the second Monday of the month, and we did have our coffee hour at the Maplewood Center, and it was just very, very, very nice. We had a, a nice group of individuals there, right, Mike? And we had just a good information sharing that you can get from the state level as well as the county level. It was just awesome. We had a special treat today as well, too. But I want you to know that the coffee hours will be on recess, okay, for the next two months, okay? July and August, and will return in September on its regular schedule, which is the second Monday of the month at the Maplewood Center. And of course, you're all invited as well as the residents and citizens. Everyone is invited. And we're going to miss you at that coffee hour for the next two months, but we'll see you otherwise. And again, it's a pleasure to be here. If I can take anything back to the, to the commissioner, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? City managers report? Nope. Mr. Vakow.
I come back down the ladder and, and came here. They, they, they took, they fixed that road ladder. They took a heck, they tore up, they took, anything, ladder, hotel, and came here. They took it to bed, and I went by today, and they had, they sprayed the water on the, on the grass. I go by, got a big leak, they hope, they took leaked water all over the place. I went by today, water all over the, on the street.
Just a water truck, they watered the side, Mr. Vakow. It's not going to hurt nothing if it leaks on the road.
It leaked all over. But that is, hotel, they tore up, took it to bed, repair. I think, I think it was good road, all the road. Why are you doing that? Who that dealing with? Tear up the road.
Punch list items and stuff that wasn't done right last year, we're making them, make it, we're making them correct it. Thank you. Anybody else? City managers report?
Thank you, your honor. I was, forgive me, I was trying to find an email on my phone to give you an update on recycling, curbside recycling, and our meeting scheduled with Republic. We haven't had one yet. Republic says they're busy. Not pleased, but Mr. Roney is staying on them and lighting a little flare under them. Want to mention that today, the fire department promoted two of their finest, Captain Scott Marinovich and Lieutenant Randy Keen. It was, they had a little ceremony over at City Hall. On the police department's side, the police department ran a decoy operation last week visiting 17 package alcohol dealers, liquor dealers in the city. And of those, 16 did not sell to the minor that we sent in. The only one did. So I think that, that was good. We did that just before graduation. We'll be sending out letters to each of those businesses congratulating them and the, the one business that did sell, he'll be getting some other communication from us. At the police department, we're currently upgrading the closed circuit camera system there. The system was very, very old, a black and white system. Cameras were failing right and left. We brought in some vendors to bid on the project, and the best bid we got from the[1776.75] We brought in some vendors to bid on the project and the best bid we got from the vendors was right around thirteen thousand dollars. Lieutenant Eric Zimmer and the gang undertook this project and got it done for less than two thousand dollars. So, we're, we're very pleased with that. Council will remember Mr. Raskinson complained last week regarding his neighbor and the yard and the ordinance violations there. When I looked into it the following day, I found that Angelo DeMichael, our code enforcement officer, had already taken action against the home. Back on May 27th, he had filed for a complaint and warrant with the court, charging the, the homeowner with failing to keep up his premises. I had a conversation with the buyer of Metropolitan Lincoln Mercury, that deal is done. It's, it's going to happen, they closed last week. We're very excited, the only reason I'm hesitant to mention the purchasers, I'm not sure exactly if, if they're prepared to make it public yet, but we're very pleased and it is actually someone who is already up and operating in the city of Garden City. Also, if you get a chance to stop in, it was going to be called the Yogurt Factory, I believe they've changed their branding, I'm not sure yet, but right across from the high school, the former Dunkin' Donuts and a variety of other things. Unbelievably beautiful. The interior of that place is just amazing, his plans are just amazing, and it's, they're not, it's not going to be just a yogurt place. So, that's a good, positive business preparing to open, they were actually hoping, hoping to be open before school was done, but there were a few delays. And I think that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, your honor.
Mr. Kerwin?
Just thanks to the city manager for getting the different areas I told you about cleaned up, I mean, they really look good after taking all the trash out, or the dumpsters, you know, but other than that, I don't have anything else tonight, thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Ms. McCarrick?
I had the opportunity to attend a key club meeting at the high school this past Friday and I'd like to congratulate those high school students. They just completed a project called Freedom Place where they collected items to take over to the airport that they have in a room especially for military personnel who are, you know, waiting for their next plane or whatever, but it gets, has, you know, coffee and Gatorade and water and, and all that type of things. And these kids did a fantastic job getting all those items together. And then, right on top of that, they were having a big bottle drive for the Relay for Life, so, you know, the kids, the teenagers did a fantastic job, so thank you. I have been asked to announce that the Garden City Garden Club is having a bake sale at the Flea Circus this Saturday at the Kroger parking area from ten o'clock until three, so come over, get all your fresh baked goods, get a lot of energy because on June 21st, the Garden Club is going to have its twentieth annual garden walk. And tickets are available at Barson's Greenhouse, tickets are eight dollars a piece or two for fifteen, and there are, the other place you can get tickets is Lucky Dog. And we have eight really beautiful gardens that people can see, so if you want ideas of, you know, how to improve your garden or just to see what great backyards we have at Garden City, don't forget June 21st and that is, I believe, from ten to three also. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember King?
No, I think I said it all before.
You all said?
I am, thank you.
Ms. Bettis?
I just want to thank Councilmember McCarrick for bringing up the Flea Circus. I did want to let everyone know that in addition to the wonderful items that they'll have at the circus, we will also, it'll be also an opportunity for you to come and get your dog license done or renewed. I'll have staff there who will be able to renew or get your original dog license and give you your tags. Please bring your vaccination records for your animal and he gets, she, he or she gets to play with all the other animals. And also, thanks again also for mentioning the Relay for Life. This is our sixth?
I'm going to go, hang on.
Seventh?
Seventh.
Annual, we don't know.
I'm going to go.
Seventh annual Relay for Life here in Garden City. As you know, it's been an extremely popular event and we're going to be out there next Saturday at the old high school west track or former football field.
Not old.
So, the, the, the young at heart, old high school track. And there's going to be lots of events, it's a great time to bring you and your family and it's a really fun way to support the efforts of the American Cancer Society in finding a cure for that god awful disease. And as I do every year, I just want to brag on our employees who, if one of our employees hadn't championed this idea, we wouldn't have had this event in our city and so one person can make a difference and yay. And lastly, and I'm talking a lot today, but, and lastly, is the A B ballot applications, absentee voter applications have gone out. And if you haven't received yours already and you're interested in voting absentee in the August election, you can go online and get an application, you can call our office, we'll send you one, you can stop by our office and pick up one and you've got plenty of time. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sesserski?
Yes, I just have a few things tonight. I'd like to give a reminder on Saturday, June 28th, January 4th, Community College will be hosting the Household Hazardous Waste Day. Perfect time as if we're all cleaning out our garages and basements to get rid of the old paints and oils and, you know, just all your stuff. And also, I would like to pass along my condolences to the Tom James family. I forgot to mention it the last council meeting and Tom James is a previous DPS employee who passed away in early May and the family didn't have any service or anything, but I just wanted to pass along my condolences and let the people know. So, that's it, thank you, your honor.
Councilmember Squires?
Okay, as Ms. Bettis said about the dog licenses, there will be a vet on site giving shots for your pets at a reduced rate and then usually they're set up right by the license place, so you can just take your paper from the vet and go right over and get them done. Excuse me. Also, I'd just like to send up my congratulations to the Garden City High School class of 2014 that graduated Friday night. It was a beautiful ceremony, the speakers were awesome and it was a beautiful evening and that's all I have.
Councilmember Lynch?
I just wanted to mention on the Relay for Life that's happening this Saturday, that if you're a survivor, they're looking for you. The survivor lab starts the walk in the morning after they do their little kickoff at ten o'clock. The very first lap is walked by the survivors and I know that survivor registration starts at nine thirty AM. You do not have to be previously registered, you can just go there nine thirty in the morning and register, Nora Fix is going to be over there registering people and walk in the survivor lab. Be proud that you're a survivor and come join us on Saturday morning. And speaking of relay, I believe our very first relay was in 2007. Yes.
Yes, it was.
So, yes. And with the Flea Circus, there's also animals that are up for adoption, we tend to forget to mention that. There's going to be about five or six different groups, including Poet, and I'm very familiar with Poet, but they have dogs that are being fostered right now and they're looking for their forever homes. And so, if you're looking for an animal, come out, maybe you're looking for another pet for your pet so that they have company. Come out to the Flea Circus on Saturday and check out the dogs, there'll be a vast variety, different breeds, but come and check that out, too. And then, I wanted to also congratulate Captain Scott Marinovich and Lieutenant Randy Keen for their promotions at the Fire Department and thank all of the wonderful employees of Garden City. Because like with Monica, finding all those wonderful grant opportunities and the opportunities for the kids, for the programming, for things for them that are necessary and fun at the same time. Over at the police department for finding a way to save thousands of dollars and still put in a system that's well needed. It happens around the city all the time and we need to be aware of that because that's how we keep our budget, where we keep our budget. Because our employees are jumping in, making things happen so that we're in tune with what's going on and watching our budget at the same time. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. My congratulations to Captain Marinovich and Lieutenant Keen on getting promoted today at the Fire Department. Hope to see everybody again, like they mentioned, the Relay for Life, it's a great, great event and also the Flea Circus in the Kroger Farmer's Market area over here next Saturday as well. And congratulations to the 2014 Garden City High School graduates, wish you the best when you head off to college or whatever the next chapter in your life is, you deserve it and good luck. To the small percentage that come up to this podium, the last several years, you've griped about the water rates and we finally lower them and you still, I don't understand you people and you're a very small percentage. You've come to the podium several times and we're going to get a class action lawsuit for hiring the city manager, never materialized. We're going to get a class action lawsuit for the streetlight assessment and it never materialized. Changes coming in November, didn't happen, not the changes you guys want, okay? And, and we don't buy it up here and evidently, if you go back to last November, the residents don't buy what you say when you come up here. You twist numbers, you very seldom make correct statements when you're up here. You guys need to redirect your energy into positive ways. Come to Relay for Life this Saturday, come to the Flea Circus, but change your game plan because nobody's buying it. There's no class action lawsuit coming for nothing and it's old and we're moving positive, we're moving forward. That's all I got to say on that and at this time, we need to recess to go into closed session for labor contract negotiation. Ms. Lynch?
I move to go into closed session for labor contract negotiations.
Support from Mr. Kerwin? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesserski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, at this time, we're going to recess to go into closed session.